Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wiggins, here. Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Pokenkord?
Here.
Mayor Davies?
Here.
All are present.
Thank you. Our invocation tonight will be offered by Pastor Nick Smith from the Christian Life Assembly Church. He's here.
I'm Nick Smith. I'm the new pastor at Christian Life Assembly. I'm proud to be a part of Tehachapi now and learn all about this great community. As we go to prayer today, I would like to remember Kenny. He is an influential member of our community, and I've heard tremendous things about him and what he's done for Tehachapi. So as we pray over the night, I would like to also pray for him. Lord, we come together, Lord, because this is a great place, Lord, and there is great things that need to continue to happen here. Lord, we pray for wisdom. Lord, we pray for your blessing. Lord, we pray for your protection. God, we pray that you would just be over this community. God, may you just guide our discussions tonight, Lord. Help us to better this place, Lord. And God, we also pray over Kenny today. Lord, that you would just put your hand of healing upon him. God, do what only you can do. God, we pray for a miraculous report in your precious and holy and mighty name. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Could I call on Councilmember Smith to offer our pledge, please?
Salute.
Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. We have a full house tonight.
Yep.
It's awesome. We have a General Services Director, Ashley Whitmore, will give the staff report.
Thank you. Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers, with the resignation of Councilmember Christina Scrivner on December 13th, 2022, a vacancy for the District Two City Council seat was created. During the December 19th meeting, the council directed staff to publish a notice of appointment to the position. The city clerk's office received one application from Keith Sakowitz, and he is here. He is also a resident and registered voter in District Two. So Keith, if you'd like to come up, if the council would like to ask him anything.
Thank you. I come to ask you for your vote for myself and the city councilman. I have a number of years in service in different projects in my church, in local and Boy Scouts. I was a Cub Scout, a Cub Scout Master, went through Cub Scout training with, I knew his name when I started. He lives up here, and we did Cub Scouts. I taught later on as a Boy Scout leader to be leaders. I've worked with youth in my church, with youth at North High. I was a walk-on coach for nine years for the World Motorsport Program. I have, for over 10 years, was the president of the Attendants Association out there. There's a whole bunch of stuff right now. It's all gone. But I would be, feel in an honor to serve Tehachapi. I've lived here a number of years. My first school around was in 1963, when I came up here, married my childhood sweetheart. And we have four kids, four children. We have four children, have 13 grandchildren, and four great looking for the tip here soon. Very proud, very proud of my family, and I appreciate those that are here today. Again, I would ask for your vote to be in the city council.
All right, thank you. Go up, Mr. Sakowitz, if you can be there, please. Do we have any public, or anybody in the public like to ask Mr. Sakowitz any questions? Okay, council, Mayor Phil Smith?
Hard question.
I know.
I have no questions.
Mayor Pro Tim Poken?
Yeah, Keith, when's the next train coming in? That's what I know.
If we knew that, we'd go to Vegas, because we'd make a lot more money.
We'll wait for the caboose.
You can tell it on your feet, if you're this close.
Councilmember Williams?
No, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Sakowitz for our vacant seat.
Before I confirm that, I just want to say a few words. I've known Keith for over 42 years now. Funny, when I was involved with the sports program through the church, and I came home, and I had a, Keith was one of the leaders that I had to answer to, and so I got home that night, and my wife goes, "So you got our new high council member?" I said, "Yeah, it's some guy from Tehachapi named Keith something." And Lynette goes, "Keith Sakowitz?" And I said, "Yeah, I'll have to train him like I've trained the other high council members." So the next week, I told Keith, who I was married to, and he had a little shock that Lynette would marry somebody like me, but. Welcome, Keith, and I'd like to be the second on Keith's nomination to city council. If we have no other questions, we'd like to have a nominee, we have a nomination.
Councilmember Wiggins? Yes. Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Pokenkord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
It was a 4-0 vote to appoint Keith Sakowitz to the Tehachapi City Council to complete a term to expire following the certification of the November 2024 election.
I'd like to invite Keith, if you'll come forward, and Ashley will swear you in.
Come on over here. Keith, you will raise your right hand. You just need to say yes or I agree. I, Keith Sakowitz, do solemnly affirm that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter.
I do.
All right.
Thank you. I'm going to get you to the side. I'd like to invite its family and visitors that are here, like to come forward, please. I'm going to take some pictures. Just take a few minutes, and we can do this tonight. Watch, you don't trip right here. Oh, geez, gather, gather as tightly as you can. Thank you. We'd love to see the Tehachapi behind you. There we go. There, very nice. All right. Absolutely. All right, anyone? Just tell me. Okay, is everyone watching? This one is for Nick. Thank you. Everyone. And over here. So is everybody good? Keith, would you like to have a seat there? All right. Benjamin Gutierrez, if you could come forward, please. Hey, how you doing, sir? Good. Great. Welcome. I've got to read this. I'm still new to this stuff here. So.
Want to grab a mic?
Yeah. All right. All right, thank you, sir. I'm still new at this, so I'm, give me a second here. We're going to, is this the proclamation?
That's it.
Okay. So we'd like to present a proclamation into the Kern County Health Department for Safe Surrender Baby Awareness Month. Name your name again.
Benjamin Gutierrez.
No, thank you for coming up. So here's our certificate. Can you present this to me? I'll get this. I'll have to read this to you. Certificate of proclamation. The city of Tehachapi would like to proclaim that recognize the month of February 2023 as Safe Surrender Baby Awareness Month. The Tehachapi City Council would like to recognize the efforts of the Safe Surrender Baby Coalition and the Kern County Department of Human Services to bringing awareness to the important issue. The city of Tehachapi thanks you, thanks you for your dedication to this cause and to our community partnership that have led to safe surrender of 95 babies in Kern County. We thank you for this time and effort and passion put forward to this important cause. Thank you, sir.
Thank you so much.
Can I get a picture with this?
Sure.
Can we invite the fire department? Come forward, please.
Did you want to say a few words? Does he want to say?
Yeah.
Take the photo ops now.
Could you take a picture of my, fuck for my work?
Yes.
Thank you.
Couple of photos. Let's start with Nick, where's your? And right here. Can you get a little tighter? There you go. And over here. Yeah. Would you like to say something? Are you going to hit the photo? Got it. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having me. My name is Benjamin Gutierrez. I am Assistant Program Director of the Kern County Department of Human Services, and oversee our Mahogany District Office. Just a few words, and I'll make it, of course, quick. The Safe Surrender Program is a program that allows a new mother in crisis to surrender her newborn to a fire department or hospital emergency room.
Yeah, it's just, let me get a little temperamental.
Thank you so much. And oftentimes, you know, we hear the news, and we hear a situation like this that sometimes ends in tragedy. This program allows a mother another option, in words, to safely surrender her child. As the mayor stated, since the inception in 2006, Kern County has taken in 95 infants, which have been placed into care of, into adoptive families, and the situation has had worked out very well. There are some, a few details about this program, where the mother had three days after the birth of the child to make this decision. She also, at the hospital she would be burnt to, also may make the decision to safely surrender her baby after the floor is born. Very few questions are asked. After 14 days, the parent has 14 days, at that point, either change their mind. We have had children that were reclaimed by their parents. In fact, we had one last year. So, as again, as opposed to sometimes the other alternative, this program really does create a very good option, and it's worked very well for Kern County. I'd also like to thank, of course, the Kern County Fire Department, not only for their efforts, but what they do for our community anyway, but also for participating in this program, as it allows many opportunities for this program to take place and to help our community. So thank you so much for what you do for us. We appreciate it, and we appreciate your participation in this program, and it helps to us, everyone. Thank you.
Mr. Kaminsky.
Right up to your. Is the right arrow left or?
Right arrow.
Right arrow. Left. Good evening, council, Mayor Davies. I've been a lot. I've been down the gym floor. You and I would be doing what we're doing. It's a stranger's thing, so it might happen. Anyway, thank you for having me tonight. Thank you especially to City Manager Garrett for meeting with me a few months ago, and allowing me to talk to you about Rotary and the Peace Pole that we'd like to have installed. Like to thank our current president, Judy Trujillo, Peace Building Community Member, Captain Skirnoff, and also my wife, Marilyn Lewis, our secretary of the club this year. I am the past president of the Tehachapi Rotary Club, the president-elect, and current here, I'm just the Peace Building Chair, trying to get it installed. So I want you, everybody, to close their eyes. Look at images you see when I tell you a community lacks peace. You see acts of violence? You see people isolated by color, religious beliefs, or ethnicity? Do you see more frowns and smiles, more crying than laughter? Do you see homelessness, more anger than friendship? Do you see people who are hungry or lack access to health care? Do you see people lacking an opportunity or vote? This, you look at your eyes. Peace Building is not just an absence of conflict. Causes for lack of peace, I gave this presentation, or part of it, to the Tehachapi High Interact Club. I told them about their own campus. As far as our city goes, causes for lack of peace include social media ugliness, disinformation in mainstream media, drug abuse, which leads to petty crime, family strife and dysfunction, a lack of accountability in taking responsibility, poverty resulting in poor health, sickness, malnutrition and disease, injustice and inequality causing frustration and lack of trust in institutions, pervasive hopelessness that things will not improve ever, causing stress and violence, limited access to clean water, adequate food, shelter, sanitation, and economic opportunity resulting in lack of self-esteem. As former principal at Jacobson Middle School, I saw parts of this almost every day. Now, around the world, Rotary, if you didn't know, is a worldwide service organization. We've eradicated polio all around the world, except Pakistan and Afghanistan. And I just came back from a conference of President-elect in Los Angeles over the weekend, and we raised money at that conference, over $30,000, to help eradicate polio in those two countries. There are cities around the world where there's different religions, who don't speak to each other, and there's a Rotary-sponsored Quokta Enterprise to create jobs for women in those countries. The trains installed at schools, we take those for granted. For young ladies to take care of their bodily needs and keeping them in school rather than being trafficked. Our district, which is Kern County, Ventura, San Luis Obispo, and Santa Barbara Counties, this district, 5240, helps the transition of people aging out of the foster care system so that they can live meaningful lives and not end up in gangs or on the street. None of these talk about conflict or violence, but these do create positive peace. Peace Building in Tehachapi by our club. First one that came to mind immediately when I was making this PowerPoint, the concept for Ukraine. Started with a suggestion by a community member to a Rotarian. We ended up raising $12,000 to send through Rotary International to Rotary Clubs in Ukraine and Romania. Our 12 Days of Christmas Food Drive, I want to thank Greg, Susan was there, Keith been there, Chief Craigers was there, he has the coolest car. Anyway, Health Flubber, that helps reduce hunger in Tehachapi. Those people are so appreciative, so appreciative. The Student Outstanding Academic Recognition Award Program, they have a JMS, that encourages struggling students. Salvation Army Codes for Kids provides protection in the winter. Our literacy project, which has been going on for years, delivers each year personalized books for Tehachapi Unified Kindergarteners. We have cleanup days. Our Interact Club worked with the Parks and Rec not too long ago, and the railing at the, the Zeebo railing at Central Park. They did pickup, trash pickup days, what have you. We now deliver Meals on Wheels a week a month to needy seniors. We have our Breakfast with Santa, which is an annual get-together engaging the community. Other service clubs, Kalanis, Lions, Parks and Rec, we all get together and put this on. And then we have Ryla, which is Rotary Youth Leadership Board, and Kern YES Youth Empowerment Seminar, which provides leadership opportunities for teenagers, and those leadership opportunities are life-changing. So we're committed to becoming a peace builders' club. Nearly all of our projects promote peace, we want to become official. We want to have a peace pole in Tehachapi. We've formed partnerships with our Chamber of Commerce and the Greater Tehachapi Economic Development Council for local businesses to improve networking and engage service activities, communicating with our own club and our Interact Clubs about peace building, to expand members' awareness of the peace process. Why? That's why I have a water bottle at school for meetings. Raising awareness of Rotary's peace building history, and we want to write peace poles in Tehachapi High School, Valley Oaks High School, and of course, here in Tehachapi. And with Valley Oaks, Mr. Trujillo just notified us today, had purchased their pole for their campus.
Fantastic.
So what is a peace pole? Well, there's peace poles around, all around the globe, over, it's estimated, over a quarter of a million. Every country in the world dedicated is wanting to see peace. Each says, "May peace prevail on earth," in different languages. Some are four-sided, some are six-sided. The one in Valley Oaks purchased is eight-sided. It's just a way of bringing people together to inspire and awaken and uplift the human consciousness that the world needs peace. There's a gathering, which church is?
Tehachapi Community Church.
Tehachapi Community Church. Church has a peace pole in their garden between their buildings. I don't think we have enough, to be honest with you. And you stand as a silent visual for peace prevail on earth. So you see there, there's three examples. My friend Fernando Aguirre from Bakersfield East Rotary Club is there at an installation. That's actually a mural he's standing in front of. It's not the padre. And then the middle picture is in front of the library at Bakersfield College. And then along the right, I was fortunate to be there for that installation. It was at the Kern YES Day at Taft Fort, and was installed in one of their gardens, which I think would work in, I'm about to show you. So where to put a peace pole? Mr. Garrett and I had talked, at our last meeting, Rotary meeting, there was probably a consensus that the visitor's center would be the best place. There's gardens there that would just fit right in. Centennial Plaza is another possibility, Railroad Park as well. The four languages, English, Spanish, for sure, and I got question marks. There's so many to choose from. At our last meeting on Thursday, there was a consensus, probably a Native American language and Braille. Something to, any of you have an idea? Briggs got my contact information. And we've agreed that Rotary will purchase a peace pole, and the city would install it. We just got to figure out where. And I'd like to close with a quote from Anne Frank. "How wonderful it is that nobody need wait a single moment before starting to improve the world." Everybody needs to take a piece of the peace to get peace. And I just met over the weekend at the conference, the Rotary International President, the Grand Poobah, if you will, of Rotary, Gordon McNally, and he had a great quote, that peace is the soil from which hope takes root. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. Do we have any public comment? Anybody in the public like to ask Mr. Kaminsky any questions? Council?
How big is this pole?
It's about, when it's installed, it's about six feet tall.
Four sides?
Yeah, four sides.
Would you rather she sits?
112.
Any other questions?
I have another possibility of where you might put it, and that's over at the railroad depot in the park area in the front, because out of the visitor's center in the railroad park, I think there's more traffic through the depot than there is there. So that's a possibility.
Phil, someone who's?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith, any other questions?
No questions, just a comment, what a great organization to promote peace. It says it right, every word says it.
I haven't gone into any details, but the conference was just absolutely exciting, thrilling, and motivating above all.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. I appreciate what the Rotary does, all our service clubs in town, what they do for our town, and our community, and our children, promoting peace. I think that's what we need more and more, today's, especially what's going on today.
Yes, I couldn't agree more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul.
So Mayor Davies, it's our main. So we're looking for a direction, and we want to make sure we're very clear. So the city is agreeable to allowing the Rotary to fabricate, and we will install the peace pole. I think it's a great idea, quite frankly, thank you. I'd like to work with Mr. Kaminsky and the Rotary Group to select the correct spot. We've got a lot of different ideas. I think an area where people might have some space to gather would be appropriate, because you're going to have a dedication ceremony, I would suspect, and maybe from time to time, if there's turmoil in the world, people may want to gather there. The four languages that I'm thinking of are English, Spanish, Kauai-Su, and Braille. I think those would be the optimum for Tehachapi. But certainly, if you had other languages, we could look at that. Four by four is easy to buy compared to something that you might have to fabricate, but that would be left up to you. But if we could get a nod, then we can move forward with that. Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky.
Do we need to make a note? Okay, great. All right, thank you again. Phil will continue. Item nine, just.
Public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comments. Do we have any public comments? Yes, ma'am.
We'll have consent, too.
Okay.
Thank you. Is it on?
Yes.
Yes.
It's very directional tonight.
Okay. Probably Elliot, I live in the city. So I've noticed these before. Today, when I was looking at your agenda, and I saw the destruction of records, I looked at the list, I thought, wow, what a treasure trove of historic information. So I just wanted to suggest to you, I know you have to get rid of stuff, but perhaps either the library or the Heritage League could be offered an opportunity to see if some of the documents might be archived. I look at that.
Mr. Garrett and I had talked at our last meeting, Rotary meeting, there was probably consensus that the visitor's center would be the best place. There's gardens there that would just fit right in. Centennial Plaza is another possibility for Rotary Park as well. The four languages, English, Spanish for sure. And I got question marks. There's so many to choose from. At our last meeting on Thursday, there was a consensus, probably a Native American language and Braille. Something that, any of you have an idea? Breaks out my contact information. And we've agreed that Rotary will purchase a peace pole and the city would install it. We just got to figure out where. And I like to close with a quote from Anne Frank. How wonderful it is that nobody need wait a single moment before starting to improve the world. Everybody needs to take a piece of the peace to get peace. And I just met over the weekend at the conference, the Rotary International President, the Grand Poobah, if you will, Rotary, Gordon McNally. And he had a great quote. That peace is the soil from which hope takes root. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. Do we have any public comment? Anybody in the public like to ask Mr. Kaminsky any questions? Counsel?
How big is this pole?
It's about, when it's installed, it's about six feet tall.
Four sides?
Yeah, four sides.
Would you rather see six?
Eleven to two, Ryla.
Any other questions?
I have another possibility where you might put it. And that's over at the railroad depot in the park area in the front. Because out of the visitor's center in the railroad park, I think there's more traffic through the depot than there is there. So that's a possibility.
Bill, someone who's...
Yeah.
Councilmember Smith, you have any questions?
No questions, just a comment, what a great organization to promote peace. Just says it right. Every word says it.
Any details, but the conference was just absolutely exciting, thrilling and motivating above all.
Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky. I appreciate what the Rotary does, all our service clubs in town, what they do for our town and our community and our children promoting peace. I think that's what we need more and more today, especially what's going on today.
Yes, I couldn't agree more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Paul.
So we're looking for a direction. We want to make sure we're very clear. So the city is agreeable to allowing the Rotary to fabricate and we will install a peace pole. I think it's a great idea, quite frankly, thank you. I'd like to work with Mr. Kaminsky and the Rotary group to select the correct spot. We've got a lot of different ideas. I think an area where people might have some space to gather would be appropriate because you're going to have dedication ceremony, I would suspect. And maybe from time to time, if there's turmoil in the world, people may want to gather there. The four languages that I'm thinking of are English, Spanish, Kauai Sioux and Braille. I think those would be the optimum for Tehachapi. But certainly if you had other languages, we could look at that. Four by four is easy to buy compared to something that you might have to fabricate. But that would be left up to you. But if we could get a nod, then we can move forward with that. Perfect, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kaminsky.
Do we need to make a nod? Okay, great. All right, thank you again. Bill, we'll continue. Item nine. Just...
Public comments.
Oh, I'm sorry, public comments. Do we have any public comments? Yes, ma'am.
We'll have consent, too.
Okay.
Thank you. Is it mine?
Yes.
Yes.
It's very directional tonight.
Okay. Hi Elliot, I live in the city. So, I've noticed these before. Today, when I was looking at your agenda and I saw the destruction of records, I looked at the list, I thought, wow, what a treasure trove of historic information. So I just wanted to suggest to you, I know you have to get rid of stuff, but perhaps either the library or the Heritage League could be offered an opportunity to see if some of the documents might be archived. I look at that when I do historical research. When I can come across a staff report or an EIR, there's a wealth of information. And I just think it's important to have it. I know you don't need it, but I just wanted to suggest that. I talked to Cory, he said, well, would you go through it all? And now I would do that. I belong to the Heritage League, I have not discussed it with them. But they have a really nice library where some people meet once a week and go through looking for stuff to file away. And I'd be happy to help with that if that might be a possibility. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you want to take number seven off of consent?
Well, not necessarily. But I did want to comment that we do, most of the records are old financials, things like that, but they probably mean something to somebody at some point. A couple of years ago, we had, you know, fifteen hundred square feet of storage and it was just boxes and paper for everywhere. And we paid a lot of money, a lot of taxpayer money paying for that. So we started a program led by Tory Marsh, actually with Ashlye Self and others, where we started laser fishing almost everything. Right, I mean, we have electronically saved. We've also found nuggets like you can't believe, and we have saved those. So the documents or any certificates or different things, we actually have saved them in City Hall upstairs. We have a treasure trove upstairs. Most if not all of these documents are just routine, if you will. But if the council would like, we can certainly, prior to destroying records in the future, offer it to the Heritage League. Some of it may be confidential, but we'd have to redact that and look, but certainly it's a great idea. We can look into that and start that process. Because I agree, some of the things that we have found are so amazing. Like, wow, that is so cool. Back of the day, you know, somebody did something.
Just to give you a general idea, too, this is about thirty boxes or so worth of stuff. So it's quite a large number to go through just to make sure that's...
Well, some of it clearly would not be of much interest, but some of it would be. So, anyway, thank you.
Thank you. All right, I need to back up. I missed item five, public comment. Do we have anybody from the public who'd like to come to the podium and make any comments about anything that's not on the agenda? I see none.
I think also the consent, consent motion.
All right, now, I need to make a motion for the consent item.
Still move.
I'll second.
Okay, roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sakowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fogankord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
It was a five-zero vote to approve the consent agenda.
I want that piece of paper.
He's already causing trouble. Item nine, RSI bills and dispersments. At this time, I need to recuse myself, so I'll turn the meeting over to Mayor Pro Tim Fogankord, because I'm an employee of RSI Patrol.
Do I have any public comments related to the RSI dispersments and bills at this point? Public comment? Counsel?
Motion to approve? Second.
Can I have a roll call? Councilmember Sakowitz?
Yes.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fogankord?
Yes.
It was a four-zero vote to authorize the dispersments of bills for RSI Patrol with a recusal from Mayor Davies.
Development Service Director reports. Jay?
Sir.
Number ten, item...
Mayor Davies, the council, I only have one item for you tonight. And we're picking up where we left off at the last council meeting. This is the pre-zone of the Red Apple Track Annex, Red Apple Track.
Jake, interrupt your focus. Mr. Sakowitz will need to recuse himself because he is a tenant of the owner of the Mountain Air Estates. Right, yeah, so we're going to kick you out?
Welcome, now get out.
Yes. Just to be clear, Mr. Garrett verges owns Mountain Air Estates. And just so that we don't have a potential conflict of interest, Mr. Sakowitz is leaving the room and recusing himself.
Okay. There you go. All right. So this is the pre-zone of the Red Apple Track Annexation, two C three, and authorization to file Annexation number eighty-six with the Local Agency Formation Commission. So I'll pick up where we left off at the last meeting. If you recall, there were four steps following the planning commission's already heard this issue in order for us to prepare this item to go to the Local Agency Formation Commission for their consideration of this annexation. So this is the property located at two-one-five-oh-one Tucker Road. That is the northwest corner, the intersection of Tucker Road and Tehachapi Boulevard. And it's named the Red Apple Track because that was its original name when it was self-divided back a long time ago. And so in January, you acted upon the planning commission's advice and began this process. And we completed the environmental review, you all certified that, and we introduced an ordinance to pre-zone this property to C three. So tonight, the two items that remain are to consider and adopt the ordinance of the council to pre-zone the subject property and then to instruct us via resolution to fill out the proper paperwork and apply to LAPCO for this actual annexation. So we've got about a year in the making on this annexation. This is a ten acre site in the location that I referenced before. So I think I'll stop there since we spent a while on this in the last council meeting. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer them. But my first recommendation is that you adopt by titles only in ordinance of the city council, the city of Tehachapi amending, the city of Tehachapi zoning code to pre-zone the property located within the city of Tehachapi's sphere of influence. So that concludes the first half of my report and my recommendation.
Do we need to take these separately, right?
Depends on what you would like to do.
I'm fine with you taking them together if you'd like. Frankly, the second action, I'll go ahead and read it for you, is that I had recommended you adopt a resolution, the city council, the city of Tehachapi approving Annexation number eighty-six and directing staff to apply to the Kern County Local Agency Formation Commission. That's sort of a perfunctory last step. If you've said yes to all the rest, now we might as well finish the work. So, yes, if it's okay to take a vote, that's my recommendation.
The motion should make it clear that there are two items to approve in one motion. The ordinance and the resolution.
Okay. So do I have any public comments at this time regarding either item? Okay, I see none. Can we have a roll call vote or a motion, please, on the first item?
I still move on the first item.
I'll second it.
Are we going to do both at one time? The ordinance and the resolution?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
So Joan, you will modify your motion for both the resolution and the ordinance.
Okay.
Of the ones.
Yes, I modified my by having both ordinances and resolution in one motion, please.
And I'll second.
Thank you.
Okay. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Wiggins?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Fogankord?
Yes.
Mayor Davies?
Yes.
It was a four-zero vote to adopt the ordinance by title only and resolution as presented with a recusal from Councilmember Sakowitz.
Thank you. And I'll be bringing this back after LAPCO has their time with it, which could be many months before we get through that. So thank you.
All right, thank you, Jay. Okay, we'll go to item fifteen, I'm sorry, fourteen, city manager reports. Mr. Garrett?
Thank you, Mayor Davies. Two things for you this evening. Thank you to Mr. Sakowitz for joining our city council. It's very time consuming. It's a big commitment and serving the city of Tehachapi is very honorable. So thank you for your time in advance. Want to say thank you, probably thank you to Chief Kent Gregor, retired from the city of Tehachapi recently. And I also want to introduce Acting Lieutenant Dunham, if you could come to the podium, please. So Jason Dunham has been with the police department since the formation of, or the reformation of the police department some fifteen plus years ago. So currently sergeant, but I've asked him to become the acting lieutenant, so he stepped up. We appreciate that, Mr. Dunham. And if you'd like to say a few words to introduce yourself, it'd be great.
Thank you guys for the opportunity and everything's going to continue like it has been.
Perfect. Thank you for sticking with us.
Absolutely, I'm not going anywhere. So, there you go.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you.
Are there, is there any reports from the council?
Keith, do you have any comments? I know you're here, but... I'd like to thank you for accepting me. I've always wanted to serve in the city. Forgot a couple of places I've served. I've been on board at the Tehachapi Depot for twelve years. I've been the vice president for eight years. I'm the idiot who's responsible for the outlook at the Loop and tantalizing the city to help us do something with the caboose. So I'm looking forward to that. Looking forward to working in this city.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith?
When the Girl Scout troop was here last year and they had questions for the mayor and everything, they asked if there was a project that we could have them do. And I said, we were going to stall until, or put it off until the spring, that you might have something for them other than just, you know, litter cleanup or sprucing up, some special project. You mentioned something about something around City Hall or some flower planting or there was something you had in mind. So I'm just jogging your memory that we don't want to forget the trip that came through.
If I could.
Yes.
The Girl Scouts were instrumental in helping at our Tehachapi hometown Christmas.
Yes.
I reached out to them and they were instrumental in bringing their troop out and participating and providing kids activities during that day. So that was one of the things that we reached out right away and they were all about it. So...
Okay, if that serves the, because it was their request to have a project. If that meets their needs, that's fine.
Yeah, I asked the troop leader and they were excited and they were outstanding to help that day.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
There's no shape to this yet, but the Valley Park project is going to construction here in a few months. That's the one acre park located there. And so hopefully there'll be some opportunities for us to get involved with the community as we're finalizing that. Probably not digging irrigation lines or anything like that, but hopefully we'll have a few months. We've talked about that.
Yeah, that's a great idea, Jay. Thank you for that, Keith, for the reminder and Jay for the reminder also. You'll remember when we designed and built Pioneer Park on the north side, we had community engagement. And that was the best time ever because when somebody helps build a park, then they have some ownership in that park. So our plan is to definitely include Girl Scouts, neighborhood, you know, invite, have some different projects that they can do for us. But we're going to reach out to them again. We talked about flower beds, that's kind of a daily or weekly routine. Maybe they just want the projects, but Keith, we'll reach out to them and make sure that we're satisfying their needs.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
Mr. Mayor?
When we did this, did we write some kind of a thank you letter or thank you note, bring them in front of the council to thank them? I think this is part of educating them to, when you do something and you do something right, and that it's a feedback that you will get more action out of those troops.
It's a great idea. They were acknowledged that evening, they had a chance to spend time with Mayor Smith. And then post through the holidays, we had not had any chance to follow up with that other than they were just really excited. And that's when the troop leader came back to me that they were very excited, but it's something we definitely could do.
Maybe a certificate, I don't know. If we do that to them and let them know that absolutely we really appreciate them, then they're going to come back and want to do that again.
We can't fight that we have to repair streets and get modern, but somebody dug up all the daffodils. And replanting bulbs is an easy solution. They're low maintenance, they come up, they look beautiful and...
Mayor Pro Tim Fogankord?
Sure. Don't forget, Girl Scout cookies are coming up for sale. So you can help them out that way.
We'll have them come to city council.
There you go. That's what I need, cookies. Also, a big thank you to the Rotary Club because they do lots for the community. My granddaughter was privileged to go to the Ryla camp and it was one of the most memorable experiences of her life.
Really? Excellent. Is that it?
That's it.
Well, I just, just a few comments on tonight's meeting. Personally want to thank Keith for stepping up and applying for this position. He's been instrumental in my life for about forty-two years. When I first met him forty-two years ago, he was over the sports program down in Bakersfield and I was his, I guess I'd say his assistant. So that's where I met Keith and I've been good friends with him ever since. And we've served on different things through church and different organizations through the years. We've barbecued many, many chickens with our July Fourth barbecue. So it's an honor to have him on the city council and I appreciate his willingness to serve. And again, I'd like to thank everybody for their participation in tonight's meeting. I'd like to welcome Keith again. We've had a, kind of a mild winter still. I don't know what's on the horizon. I don't trust the weather apps anymore. It says it's not raining and then my windshield wipers come on, so I don't know who to trust anymore. But I appreciate everybody's willingness to serve. And at this time, we'll close for, we have a closed session and somebody will return to this room after closed session to report.
If there's anything.
If there's anything to report. Thank you.